Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, October 7, 2025, meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti, and with us this evening.
Good evening, Owen Weaver, Town Council.
Paul Kaplan.
Jenny Bowser, Recording Secretary.
Kevin Cornell.
Jay McGuire.
Jack Demergen, zoning administrator.
All right, that's everybody except Commissioner Parenti, who's couldn't make it this evening. All right, first item on our agenda is a review of the minutes from the September 16, 2025 meeting.
Jenny, just a quickie. Paul Kaplan is the vice chairman.
Oh.
I was just settling into my secretary role, really?
You're out, I'm in.
Yeah, Kevin is the secretary.
Okay, so Kevin is the secretary?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
On that first page, the first paragraph, Town Plan and Zoning Commission held a meeting on September 16, 2025 at 7:01 PM. It should be, to be, I know it's nitpicky, but seven, seven o'clock below, I don't know, I just, is that in the?
Maybe we opened like a minute late that night.
Oh, is that, is that what we do?
I would think that's, that's.
Yeah.
Oh, all right, okay, fine, fine.
Yeah, I don't know what that was, okay.
What's that?
Yeah.
What's that?
Okay.
We had to get over here, we had to think about it.
Again, I'm just making sure you guys are reading the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, that will be fixed.
In Old Business?
Mm-hmm.
Were we, is that where we were discussing changing in the commercial districts?
But, but.
Oh.
With the planning, I mean.
New zoning text regarding housing, I'm just trying to forget, were we talking about the POCD, or were we talking about?
You know, I think we were talking about the timeline of potential text amendments that we could do as preventative measures for any new state statutes.
Right, but that was, that was with respect to the commercial districts.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, not regarding housing, oh, the housing in the commercial district?
It was regarding, and it was really considering changing the bulk area requirements in the commercial districts.
And it had to do with mixed-use type developments, right?
Yeah, if, if the, you know, if that housing ever got passed, which I was going to ask about.
Regarding the commercial lot size.
Right.
In order to prevent anyone from abusing new housing language that were to be passed.
Right.
And just didn't pass anyhow.
I don't think they've even started a special session yet, so.
She might have said the end of October.
So it has certainly not passed.
Yeah, but I'd leave out words like abuse.
Okay.
And I would just put in that we were, you know, discussing changing the bulk, you know, area requirements in the commercial districts.
Okay, noted.
We're good.
All right, that was, that was all I had. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Well, so moved. We have a motion?
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, next item on our agenda is Old Business. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring up under that topic?
No, since Owen happened to mention while we were discussing this that the, the state currently hasn't moved forward on their affordable housing legislation, so, thanks for the update.
All right, if nothing under Old Business, we'll move to New Business, and one of the things I intended that we talked, that we talk about tonight is the language, the amendment to the zoning regulations, which would prohibit short-term rentals in the residential zone in town. And that's why Owen's with us tonight, he's here to, he drafted the revisions, and he's here to answer any questions that any of us might have. Yeah, I, you know, I went ahead and asked Owen to work on the amendment, and I think I wanted to get going on that, I didn't, I didn't want to start before the case was decided, the pending case was, had been decided by the zoning board of appeals. I was concerned that that might be appealed, and our action could somehow be evidence, you know, on amending the regulations could somehow be evidence that, you know, the regulations were inadequate before to prevent that type of commercial use in the residential zone. But we're by the appeal period on that.
No appeal was taken?
That's my understanding.
No, so to the extent I can make public comment, there was no appeal taken of the zoning board's decision, and then last week, or a week and a half ago, the town filed for an injunction, which has a hearing date pending in November.
With respect to that property, that?
Yes.
That cease and desist order?
Yes.
Okay. So you?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I met with the chairman and Jack maybe a month or so ago to draft up some potential amendments to the, what I'll call the rental provisions in Article 3. Not knowing what this, the consensus of what this board would want, I, you know, we decided to go with an outright ban of short-term rentals as defined by 30 days or less, just as a starting point, not necessarily as where you have to end, depending on what the consensus of the board is. So I'm happy to walk through the regulation, there are not that many changes, but what would need to be done if you wanted to ban short-term rentals is, again, we'd have to define what a short-term rental is, the current regs don't do that, state statute under the taxing code or title defines short-term rental as 30 days or less, so that's, that's kind of where, where other statutes and ordinances fall. Chapter 7-148QQ also uses that 30-day benchmark, and that's the licensure by the selectmen of short-term rentals, so that's what we pick, 30 days or less, and that required adding the term "short-term rental" to Section 183-14, which is the definitions. We also made a change to the definition of dwelling unit to exclude hotels, motels, and/or recreational campgrounds. The key, I think the key one there is the recreational campgrounds, because there was some concern by Camp Cedar Crest, right, Jack?
Correct.
That if we regulated short-term rentals, that would impact their business, because I understand it that they rent out the cabins there. So that's, that's one change, and again, that's to Section 18, excuse me, 383-14. The next changes came in Section 383-19. Section A has a list of prohibited uses, which is not exhaustive, but we added as a last, or as a new one, number 7, the letting of rooms and/or furnishing of board in a dwelling unit, except in accordance with the provisions of 180, excuse me, 1, I keep saying 1, 383-26B, and that's what the next section for amendments, that's in Article 3. And we tweaked Section B. Section B originally provides that the letting of rooms and/or furnishing of board in a dwelling unit to a total of not more than four persons is permitted, subject to certain conditions. We, what we did was, we, we kept the, the opening preface that the letting of rooms and/or furnishing of board in a dwelling unit to a total of not more than four persons is permitted, but then we added "which shall not include short-term rental," which, as we discussed earlier, is now a defined term and prohibited by the regulations. And then in terms of the conditions, we tweaked the conditions somewhat. In the course of this issue becoming into the public domain, so to speak, you know, there was an issue as to whether or not long-term rentals, where somebody, a snowbird, is renting out their property and they're not actually occupying the home, if that, if that's permitted under the regs, and arguably, that scenario is not allowed under the current regs, so we, we got rid of the, in B1, the term reside, and we changed that to that they have to be the owner of the dwelling unit, or have a membership interest in the entity that owns the dwelling unit to cover LLCs or other legal entities other than a person that might own the home.
Make sure I'm keeping up, Owen.
Sure.
And feel free to interrupt anyone, Owen.
Well, we, we'll let you get through it, in fact, I should shut up and let you get through it.
Okay.
We'll circle back.
Right, so that was, that was the, or proposed change to the ownership condition, I'll call it, to renting. We kept the other conditions, the 200-square-foot size per room, that there'd be no cooking facilities attached, and no accessory building can be used for letting of rooms or furnishing of board, and then we added the, no room shall be let for a period of 30 calendar days or less, and then if you, I probably should have did a dot, 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 and got rid of the rest of the section, but if you go to the last page of the proposed ordinance, I think it's J, right? J, subsection J deals with home occupation or home offices, which meet the following criteria, and we added there, subsection 15, the very last section, the following uses by their inherent nature and intensity shall not be considered a home occupation or home office, dot, 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 we added short-term rentals to the end of that list, just as an over precaution if someone were to try to argue that renting the home is a home occupation for, for whatever reason. So, it's not a lot of changes, though, and I think it, the intent was to clarify the existing regulations, the position of the town is that this is not permitted, the commercial rental, excuse me, renting is not permitted, but changes, well, I'll hold that thought, so. That was the purpose, and I'm happy to answer any questions that any commissioner may have.
So, if we can start at the beginning, we tied in 30 days, because that's a legally accepted standard in general.
Yeah, it's what the legislature have used for, you know, imposing a sales tax or an occupancy tax, and it's in the selectman statute.
So as long as we are considering it, is everyone okay with 30 days? Might as well start there.
I'm okay with 30 days. And again, I think we're trying to get to a point where we can have something that we could submit for, for a hearing.
Yeah, public hearing, yeah.
Public hearing.
Okay.
Jack, I'm curious as to.
So if somebody, you know, felt strongly about a different time period and explained why, and it made sense to us, we could make a change at that time.
A good starting point.
Is this, is that kind of timeframe going to affect your enforcement, all right? How do you, I'm just curious as to, how you been trying to enforce it now in terms of, you said you were going on websites from time to time?
Yeah, I mean, mainly how we would find these is, you know, you find the listing online, or if somebody were to complain.
It's kind of like any other regulation.
It is, yeah, I, I think the 30 days is appropriate, you know, I think our standard rental, in my opinion, you know, in orange, that is a reasonable, you know, timeframe to have, you know, a renter in a single-family home here in town, so I don't have any issues with that timeframe, no.
So it's, it's the daily churning that causes most of the problems?
Right, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we started there, so we seem to use the word letting and leasing interchangeably throughout the changes in the text here. Can we pick one of them? I mean, do they, or are they, are they interchangeable?
Go with one?
Right, yeah, I'm looking here, I mean, we use, looks like we have chosen to use leasing in like the title of the section, like the amendment to 383-26B, renting or leasing of rooms, but then we use letting, so.
It's seven.
Yeah, I, I think we can, we can use, we should pick one and not, not be interchanging between the two, so.
Okay, and is there any substantive difference between renting and leasing? Meaning, if I, and there's a reason for the question, so, if I'm doing a six-month lease, there's a document that goes lease, if I pop up on the Airbnb site, because I don't do that, what is that document? Is somebody, is it a rental agreement, is it a leasing agreement, I don't, or do we care?
I've never understood those two terms to be.
Anything other than synonymous?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Okay.
But I don't understand the question, I don't think.
Well, the question is just, is there a difference, you know, are, you know, are they different terms of art, so to speak? Or are they the same thing?
So if you use the prohibition of leasing in here, will rental agreement get you around it?
That's a question, that's.
By just, by just calling it a rental agreement?
I'm just asking.
Well, so, I mean, you could have the same thing, though, just to go back to your first question, if we pick leasing, someone may say, well, I'm renting, or I'm letting the property.
That's what I mean.
So, I mean.
I don't see how someone would get anywhere by doing that.
No, that's just calling what the act is, which is renting, you know, which is for money.
Okay.
Being in rooms for money.
You know, just want to make sure, so, so then, the question is, are there cases where people are furnishing board in these rentals? Is it something we should care about? I mean, there's some things here about that these units can't have cooking, independent cooking facilities.
Right.
Do we care if the, you know, the, somebody's providing board for a month to somebody?
Like operating a restaurant there, or?
That's, you know, I mean, if you, if, if you're paying, if someone's paying you to be in your house, or your commercial, you know, your property that you're renting for this purpose.
You're saying, but they're not, they're not a tenant, they're not, they're not, they're not leasing.
Well, I'm saying that.
They're just going there to eat.
More like a bed and breakfast.
No, I'm saying that they're, it's a bed and breakfast, do we have any of those in town?
Well, that would be the letting of rooms.
And furnishing of board.
And furnishing of board.
I, I, I understand, but since now those people are going to be in for 30 days.
Have to be in for 30 days, otherwise it's a violation of the regulation.
Right, you know, do we, does, does the providing of board push this thing into a different category where the health department cares, or?
That may be, but, I mean, from my standpoint, as long as they're in there for less than 30 days and renting, they're in violation, whether they're getting bored or not getting bored.
Yes.
So it's, to me, it's irrelevant, that part of it.
You're, you're asking if it's just boarding, does that make it okay?
No, I'm, I'm just asking, do we care, I mean, do we want to leave language about board in here? Is, is it serving any, us, any function for us?
Should it even be in there?
Should it even be in there?
Yeah.
Or should we just be focusing on?
Are we trying to stop bed and breakfast still?
I'm, I'm, I'm not per se, I just want to ask.
Yeah, so I, I think Jay's point, though, is, I, I get, I think the board language is irrelevant, because, let's say, bed and breakfast, if you're not in there for 30 days, you're prohibited, you can call it whatever you want.
And what constitutes 30 days? Do you have to be there 30 days, or sign an agreement that says you'll be there for 30 days?
You have access to the place for 30 days.
Yeah.
Whether you're there or not is irrelevant to me.
How many people can have access?
Right, I would just, so when I met with the chair and Jack, the first thing I posed was, you know, what's the problem that the town or this board's trying to solve, so I think you guys have now started to.
Logical approach, I like that.
Started to hit, hit on that, it's, it's complex, so.
Yeah, and along those lines, the current language stopped what we wanted anyways, right?
Yeah, under 30 days.
That's our position, but obviously someone challenged it.
Well, and they, I saw one of the cases that said that without an affirmative prohibition, that it was not necessarily, I mean, there's an argument to be made.
Right.
That it could be, it could be used.
What we're doing is worthwhile.
Yeah, I think we're closing a potential loophole.
If what we intend is to, you know.
Right.
Ban short-term rentals. But you're right, the existing regulations prevail, I mean, you know, got us the result we would have expected to get.
Right.
So what are we, so what are we doing?
No, I'm just asking, if no one cares about board.
I hate when that happens.
If it's not, you know, if, if it's.
And then do you want to shut down, I don't know how many bed and breakfasts there are in orange, I mean, bed and breakfasts are not something.
I don't know how many short-term rentals.
Shouldn't.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any.
Not, not to my, not, you know, there's nothing, no grandfathered-in, you know, establishment to my knowledge.
No, but I think we, I think we're actually, to Jay's point, I think we're, actually, this is a reasonable endeavor to do, given the fact that even with our current regulations, there were starting to pop up.
Oh, absolutely.
Issues.
With all of the rental options that today's day and age now offers you, I absolutely think this is a necessary.
It's a clear message as to what our position is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to open a can of worms, but there's people advertising their pools for rent, so, I mean, depends what you guys want to do.
There's also a camper thing, too, where you can sign up and rent someone's backyard for your camper as well.
I'm not surprised to hear that.
This, this wouldn't serve to prohibit that.
The, like renting pools?
Yeah.
No, we're, this is geared, or directed totally towards the dwelling unit.
Well, we're going to get to the dwelling unit issue, I think.
Yeah, I didn't mean to sidetrack the board, I just.
No, we do it all by ourselves.
Okay, so for, so the, the, the leasing of rooms and/or furnishing of board, the furnishing of board part's fine with everybody.
I, I think it's relevant.
I'm okay either way.
Yeah, all right, so let's leave it.
See, it is not an issue.
So, I'm just, so I'm looking at this, and I think our intent is, if somebody has a single-family dwelling, and they want to lease it out for, for a month, three months, six months, a year, that should be okay. That's kind of our objective, but anything under 30 days, that's churning too much, and it's an imposition on the neighbors.
I think so.
Exactly.
So, my question is, when we, when we parse down this language, and we start talking about the leasing of rooms, can, it seems like the lease can be a subset of the entire dwelling unit.
So now we're back to the definition of the dwelling unit?
Well, so, the dwelling unit, to me, in a single-family residence, should be one family in the home, right? So, but when we start.
That's what it says.
All right.
Or part of a building.
Or part.
So we can, this could be applied, if I understand this correctly, to a part of a building that it's used, not necessarily the entire building, I'm thinking a room.
Yeah.
Okay, and this would cover that.
Right.
So a rooming house would be prohibited under this. By the way, I want to raise this now, because I, when it hit me, when I'm going to, and I'm going to forget about it, you defined it as under 200 square, a dwelling unit is under 200 square feet, or it has to be at least 200?
Per person.
No, so that, that was one of the, well, that's one of the conditions that has been in the regulation, that I, that we did not touch, but that condition is when you're, when just a room or rooms are being let.
Yep.
The dwelling unit shall contain a minimum of floor area of 200 square feet times the number of persons to whom the room are let.
Okay.
So, like, if you're trying to cram in three people, you got to have 600 square feet.
All right, so that would take care of that, all right, good.
But, the point I was kind of getting to is that we opted out of language that allowed people to have accessory dwelling units, right?
You're thinking the, what either Jay or somebody was talking about, a camper on the?
No.
You're talking about the actual structure?
Yeah, so let's say that, so the thing we do allow is when you have the, the elder.
The elderly conversion.
The elderly conversion, okay, those are two separate, you know, dwelling units on the, on the same property, okay? So, is, you know, the language here basically creating kind of a workaround where people will now be thinking they can have an accessory apartment that they can lease out on a yearly basis, which currently we don't have, right?
Does this open that door? Because that's prohibited right now, right, unless you're elderly or?
Well, correct me if I'm, let's read 326A, a single, for permitted uses, single detached dwelling for one family, and not more than one such dwelling per lot, does that, is that what you're getting at?
Right, but then you go past that, so that's, yes, that's where we want to be, and now we're letting out a subset of that, as long as it's more than, for more than 30 days. So if I come in.
Right.
And it doesn't have a kitchen, right? There's something.
Oh, not an independent kitchen.
Yeah, right.
Right.
So, so I set up, you know, I'm an enterprising person, and I convert my garage into an apartment to rent for periods not longer than 30 days, and just tell them, but there's no, there's no kitchen, have I effectively created an accessory apartment that's otherwise prohibited under our regs?
Well, absent this provision, that wouldn't be acceptable, correct?
Absent this provision, I don't think it is.
When you say the, you're talking about the definition of dwelling unit.
Well.
Well, he posed a hypothetical about a particular, a single-family residence, right?
Yes.
Where you have a garage, and you, you're, you know, you make it nice, 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 and now you're starting to rent it out.
Right.
I, I, my gut tells me that's not, that's prohibited in town.
Okay.
I'm just asking, Jack, as I'm saying this.
I don't know about our code, but health code, that would be, health and building, I think, would be the more applicable departments in this scenario, because you're now, you're adding a bedroom.
Well, you're renting it, you posed renting it, right?
Well, yeah, and obviously, if you're renting it, then yes, it's, it wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, but, but say you can, say you have the capacity in your sewer system, you know, because you could make an addition on your house with another, extra bedroom if you meet physical criteria, but the thing is, right now, I, I can't rent it to a third party.
Right, the gar, the garage.
Yeah, can I?
I, I didn't think so, it had to be a separate unit.
You're saying for more than 30 days?
Yeah.
If it's less than 30 days, obviously it's.
It's, no, but so, so let's say, because remember when the state was trying to push these accessory apartment, you know, every single-family home can have an accessory apartment without coming before the board, right? And we opted out of that language. I'm just wondering if now this is, you're giving people a workaround to achieve it.
Well, it's not, what you describe, or what Paul described, is not a dwelling unit. The garage is not a dwelling unit.
It wasn't before somebody got in there?
No, it, no, it, but it would be leasing a room and renting a room.
No, a building or part of a building, a building or part of a building, which would be the garage you're talking about.
Right, part of a building.
Designed for occupancy, which is not applicable, it's not designed for occupancy.
It would be after you put in a bathroom.
All right, do we care? Hang on for a second, so let's, what's that, what's different than renting a room that's more than, let's say it's more than 200, that, that calculation is acceptable, and as long as it's more than 30 days?
As long as it's been legally converted and meets our code, it's just another bedroom.
Kevin's getting to, is that a accessory unit that, that this board declined to entertain previously?
We, what separates adding an additional bedroom on a house to approving, like, an elderly conversion, is that cooking facility.
And the entrance and such.
Correct, yeah, right, but you could always add a bedroom onto your house, as long as you've gotten the approvals from the necessary departments.
And you meet the bulk standards.
Right, and as long as it meets our current regs, yeah, you, you would be able to rent out a little, a bedroom.
Right, but, and I'm just saying that, back when the state invited us to.
We opted out.
Have two dwelling units, I think, so I guess, I guess the, let me, let me short-circuit to the end.
You're opening up, you're opening up something we had canned before.
Yes, but let me, but I think that if we make it clear here with, that if you're renting something in a single-family zone, you're renting the whole house. with, that if you're renting something in a single-family, uh, zone, you're renting the whole house. Okay, so.
Not necessarily. Well, supposing, well, no.
Go ahead.
The way I read tha- that definition, you could rent the first floor in a house. You could have a, you know, a, a short-term rental of the first floor, the second floor is closed off to you in some fashion.
Right, do we want that?
Why do we, why would we care?
Well, why did we care when we decided we didn't want accessory?
I didn't like it then.
We didn't like it, we wanted.
Well, it's not an accessory unit, no.
The ADUs were detached structures, if I'm remembering right. They weren't.
To me, it's two, it, it, it's two, it's, it's two families on one lot. That's what, that's what the exa- you know.
That's what this is contemplating. Con- it's contemplating for a month that there'll be two families, uh, in one building.
And I thought that what we were trying to do is that the rental was the entire structure, not a subset of the structure, and that we were making it clear that you couldn't do that on a daily basis.
Right.
But as long as it was for more than a month, it was gonna be okay.
That's, the way I, I read this, that's true.
What section you, are you reading?
Well, I'm just, I'm just using the, uh, sec- the definition of dwelling unit, okay?
Yeah.
Which is a part of a building, in this case, a single-family home, and if you rent it out for more than thirty days, it meets this criteria, right?
Yeah.
As not a short-term rental, and I don't know of any prohibition in, in town that stops it, other than if we get into health and welfare, you know, the health, health issues.
And.
No, but, sorry, wait a minute.
With no, with no kitchen, I should say.
A dwelling unit is either a building or part of a building. Designed for occupancy.
I'm thinking still single-family, right? With a, with a garage.
Or so occupied by one family.
Mm-hmm, right.
So, one family could occupy the garage.
Right. And I'm saying, take out and just have a, a building designed for occupancy, or so occupied by one family. Then, when you rent it, your neighbor isn't doubling the amount of people who are next door to him by living next to two families. If you wanted to live in a two-family, you know, it'd be someplace.
That's how the current regulations read, because.
I understand, what are we doing? We're changing the current regulation.
And to Kevin's point, it would be kind of difficult, I mean, of course, it would be complaint-driven. Then I would have to get into proving, hey, you're renting to four people, but you don't have two hundred square feet per person. I think it would, the way it's written right now, i- is a bit of an enforcement nightmare. You know, Kevin might be right, just to changing it, instead of where it just says a single fam- or a, a dw- a, a building not part of a building.
Why, why is the part of a building in there, though?
Because then you could have the, for example, the, the person who owns it in the primary structure, and the renter in a subset of the structure.
Doesn't, isn't that to cover? Isn't that to cover, uh, two-family houses? Cause there's a couple of those in town, right?
Well, they can be existing non-conforming. We're, we're, this is, this is looking to the future. Okay, in a commercial, uh, marketplace, where people are looking to make some extra money, or they want it as a primary business. So if they want it as a primary business, I buy a single-family house in town. I create two dwelling units in that single-family house, that shares a common kitchen, and I rent it out for no less than thirty days.
You've effectively made it a two-family.
Effectively made a duplex.
What, are you change, are you, are you thinking about changing some of the language here in terms of the, the definition of dwelling unit?
Well, just that, yet the, or part of a building.
And if we take that out, so it says a building?
Renting the whole building. And that, I thought, was the idea. If you're going, you know, on VRBO, I'm renting a house. And if I'm gonna stay somewhere for thirty days, I get a whole house.
So we take that out, that, or part of a building out, how does that affect renting out the garage now?
You don't. You rent out the whole building. It's still a single-family zone, and we, and a, and a single family.
So that's what back to is that, if I rented out my garage right now, for more than thirty days, which would ordinarily fit into this, I would, I would not be in violation, I would be in violation of the current, um, uh, regs that prohibit, prohibit me from making it a two-family.
A commercial activity.
Well, that's an interesting question.
Commercial activity.
I, I thought I could, so you couldn't have a border, you couldn't take in somebody to rent?
Well, supposing it was like a, a situation where you had an elderly person who had in-home healthcare, twenty-four-seven.
Right.
And it was a, you know, a bedroom and a bathroom assigned to her in the building. The rest of the building was occupied by the, by the elderly person.
Right. So, again, you're paying that person, they're not paying you to be there.
So. So.
So that situation would occur.
Wouldn't be covered by this.
Well, wouldn't be covered because you're not charging them.
Yeah, it's the exact opposite.
So, yeah, yeah. But it's a good, I mean, it's a good point, you don't wanna prohibit that.
Right.
I think the main difference was the, the cooking facility, is it can't really be a true multi-unit house because only one side can cook. You know, the other side might have their own bathroom, but how long are you gonna last in a place with, without a cooking facility? Is that really a, a dwelling?
Alright, so if I wanted to.
Maybe that was the idea.
So if I wanted to rent out, I could rent out my, my garage right now, on more, for more than thirty days, and it wouldn't be a violation of the, the current or even the, uh, the proposed change.
What if you, you rented it out to a, not for, for, to a band that uses it for practice?
Yeah, third-party, whoever it is.
Yeah, but I'm saying, it doesn't have to necess- you don't have to necessarily live in it.
Yeah.
You, you, you wouldn't wanna, you wouldn't wanna regulate against that.
I, I, I'm, now I'm trying to get my head around exactly what, where we stood in that, what we're, we're gonna, what we're gonna do with this.
For my, if, you know, if I own a house and I wanna rent my second bedroom to a buddy of mine, right now, we, we do allow that.
Right.
Because I, it's owner-occupied, I have the two hundred square feet for this other person, they don't have a separate cooking facility.
But what about the bu- by one family, though? The, the definition includes a reference to the occupancy being by one family.
Let's look up the definition for family.
Adopted as friend.
I mean, family.
I mean, I, I, I think the one family could be applied to the two options, a building or part of a building.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I, I agree with Jack, I read the current regs as if I have a room and I meet the square footage, and I, and I live in the house, and I can rent, you know, my finished attic, that's, that's legal for occupancy, as long as there's no kitchen attached to it.
For more than thirty days.
As it currently stands, I could rent it for twenty-four hours and.
Yeah.
Right, but that, that, I mean, listen, I, I, I think we're all trying to get to this thirty-day, but what are we getting, uh, we're trying?
No, yeah, under the proposal, it'd have to be more for thirty days.
So, I mean, so my, my focus i- is not on the expectation of the property owner that we're regulating here. My, my focus is on the expectations of the neighbors adjoining those properties. And they live in a single-family neighborhood. And I think it's a reasonable expectation, there's not gonna be more than one family in that, personally, i- in the house next to them. So.
No, it's nice, I, I think it's a nice expectation, but if there's room in there, and there's less than, I mean, I, I'm thinking about one person who owns the house, and they have the room to do it, why should we prohibit them from renting it out?
Well, that's why we're having the discussion. I'm just saying, what, what my, my comments are based on.
Right. No, no, I, I, I get that, and I, and I think below thirty days and the churning is something that, that at least I'm, I'm concerned about too. Um, I just wanna, I wanna be as, as least restrictive as possible, is that what we wanna do? In other words, I wanna, I wanna target what we're trying to get to and not be overly broad.
Right.
Um, and you raised an issue that now concerns me, that we're, we're trying to get to that. So if we take out the, or part of a building, does that get us where we wanna go?
Or, or is it too restrictive? I, and, and that's the discussion we might wanna chew on, language-wise, but, you know, again, not trying to tote out the old creative imaginary horribles, but I own a, uh, a McMansion that has four thousand feet, my kids are all gone, okay? Uh, there, you know, uh, you know, with these numbers, if four people take up eight hundred square feet, I could have four people renting in there, as long as, four groups of people renting in there, as long as they were there for more than thirty days.
If, we're not trying to regulate that, are we?
Well, I, I think that's.
Do we want to?
Right.
I mean, what, what?
Why, I don't, I don't, I don't know why, a- and we would impose that, uh, restriction if we, because, because we want there to be, uh, just one family, one group of related people in that house and not anybody else.
Well, it, the, that's sort of where I'm starting from, other people could start from somewhere else, where it's not a big deal.
Well, I'm just curious where we are right now. Um, i- i- in that scenario that you just posed, if we had, if I had a four-bedroom house and I, I occupied th- one of the bedrooms and three were available, and I rented out to three other guys for more than thirty days apiece, I mean, under the, even right now for twenty-four hours, but let's assume it's longer than that. Is that any, is that objectionable under the current statutes, under the current regs?
I, I think what's important here.
Objectionable if they create a breach of the peace or whatever, but that, that's not a zoning issue, I mean, it's.
Right.
I think an important distinction here is our definition of family.
Yes, which is, how many unrelated people?
So, a group of not more than six persons who need not be related, who are living in a single housekeeping unit, maintaining a common household, but I think this is where it, it applies to us. A room or border to whom rooms are let and or board is furnished as permitted by these regulations shall not be considered a member of a family for the purpose of this definition.
I'm not sure I understand.
So, a room or border who is being let the room or, or board is furnished, as permitted, shall not be considered a member of a family.
Right, but they don't have to be a member of the family, right?
No, of a fam- not, not the family that's living there, just a family, period. So, it's not turning a one-family into a multifamily unit based on this definition of what a family is.
Based on that definition, if I had three other people, would that be prohibitive of that, violative of that, uh, definition?
A person or.
Unrelated, yeah.
Of, uh, of related persons, plus guests, or, yeah, so it doesn't matter if you're related or not. Or a group of not more than six persons who need not be related.
Right.
Who are living in a single housekeeping unit, maintaining a common household.
So far.
Was it like a stu- like students?
That's, yeah, I would think this is more geared towards a student. A room or border to whom the rooms are let or board is furnished as permitted shall not be considered a member of a family for the purpose of this definition. So, I think the idea was, hey, if I have, if I live in my home and I have two extra bedrooms.
Right.
I can rent it to two unrelated people, and they are not, it's not considered a three-family house at that point because they are not each considered a family themselves.
Right.
So I think this definition is important.
And there's, they're not three stoves.
Correct, there's no cooking facility, there's no, they, they meet all the other provisions.
So tying it into a, the conversation we were having, I think that, right now, it's, if, under the current regulations, we could have that kind of a situation where we're renting out the three other, four other people, um, up to, I guess, six is what we're hearing. And not be in violation of, and, and even under this, right? I don't know if it was four, four pe- I, where, where's the four people come in?
The four, that's three eighty-three twenty-six.
B.
B, so we may wanna make that more consistent with this definition of family and with the number of people.
One says six, one says four, you mean?
Yeah, a person or a group of related persons, plus guests and domestic servants thereof, or a group of not more than six persons who need not be related, who are living as a single housekeeping unit. Yeah, so I think we need to make that a little more consistent, as well.
Just don't forget, that's not like renting for compensation, that's somebody, you own the house and you have six people who are unrelated, and I will just caution this board that the case law on what is a family is very, very difficult, and there are people who play games with, with that, so, like, once you start getting into the family unit, it is.
That I understand, yeah.
Alright, so I don't know where that leaves us relative to, I don't, I don't necessarily think I, I, we need to regulate any more than what we're doing, if, um, there are more people in the house, as long as they fit into the regulations, I, you know, yes, there'll be more people than just the one family, uh, assuming that we make one family is the guy who owns the house.
Doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't have to be.
Right.
Uh, you could be, you could own the house and rent the house.
Yeah.
But you're renting it to a family. I, I, I just, you know, and you know, there are just so many practical ways to get around the prohibition against, you know, you know, a kitchen. You know, if somebody's gonna put in a fridge and an air fryer that doesn't trip a twenty-amp circuit, you know, that, most people can eat.
But, but that's, that's not really a zoning.
Uh, no, but the zoning issue is, why are we creating the problem by allowing more than, just rent the whole house, or not?
Oh, but I think what, what Paul's saying is, why not have two, three, or four?
Okay.
I mean, why, why would, why is that objectionable?
I, I don't, just because I don't like it, doesn't mean the other three are.
Rhetorical question.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I, I think it's really restrictive to, if, well, listen, we're going to short-term re- rentals here, and we're trying to prohibit the short-term rentals.
Right.
So, I, I, I think that fits in, if, um, if right now, under the current regulations, we could rent a house, three bedrooms, um, if I, if assuming that I had the bedrooms, um, and that wouldn't be violative of, of the current regulations.
Even if, even if it were for less than fifteen, uh, thirty days.
Well, yeah, and we're, that, we're hopefully gonna close that lu- loophole, but yes. And as long as that's the case, then I, I don't see why we, um.
But, if, if four college students wanna all sign a lease for the same single-family house.
Happens all the time.
I don't, that, that's okay with me. What I'm saying is, someone wants to create a money-making, you know, enterprise and turn it into a de facto.
Rooming house.
Rooming house, youth hostel, whatever word you wanna use. I, you know, my largest investment on living next door.
Next door.
You know, I, I, I don't think that's.
We're balancing the rights of one and the other.
Exactly.
So, is four people, if it was, if it was a, a max of four people, would that change your, or opinion?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a standard family, I would say. But, uh, you know, I, listen, I, I'm, I'm just talking it out, I mean.
Yeah, me too.
If I'm crazy, I'm happy to, I'm happy to be heard, to say, no, you're crazy.
Does the square footage problem sol- does the square footage solve that problem?
Some of it, I think.
Yeah, you can't have that many people, cause they each have to have a certain amount of square footage.
Yeah.
Right.
And then second of all, I agree with you, no one would want a boarding house next to them.
Right.
But the reality of the matter is, if there are people living in the house next to you, and they're abiding all the other laws.
Yep.
Does it really matter that they're renting the house or family, right? As long as they're quiet, good neighbors, right?
Uh, and I'm, um, I'm.
So what you're, what, what we're talking about is just restricting my use of my property. Like, you say that now, but you don't know what your future, future financial situation's gonna be, and someday you may need to rent a room out, right?
Yeah.
And, and you're not gonna be able to, because we said, no, there's none of that, even if they're good people in there, whatever, so that's just my opinion.
No, no, and, and I understand that opinion, but I'll answer the question, which is, if my situation changes, and I can't follow the rules here, I get the blank out.
Yeah.
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 You know, but, that's, that's me, you know? You know, but, so, it's, it, it's, it, it's reasonable for whoever owns the property to have beneficial use of it, okay? And, but, since they bought a house in a single-family zone, why isn't the beneficial use they're entitled to, it being occupied by a single family?
Right, you see that, and, and where we differ is you see that use of the single family as. Right, you see that, and uh where we differ is you see that use of the single family as prohibitive of getting anybody else in there.
Not anybody else, but splitting it up into legally. Definable, you know, subsets in our regs. I mean, if, listen, if if uh, you know, uh a lot of these situations are just never gonna come to your attention. Based on your definition, because.
Yeah.
You know, if some unrelated college student is looking for a job and, you know, we put him up for six month in our house. You know, nobody's gonna complain.
He's not throwing parties, yeah.
Yeah, right, no, you know, but they, that's not the people we're talking about regulating. We're talking about regulating people who are investors. Buying, taking single family homes off the market.
All over West End.
In order to create commercial enterprises to generate money.
Well, yeah, we're not changing the language regarding. Or the, or the prohibition of uh against uh commercial use in the residential zone, that still applies.
No, when by by letting them rent this and not having to be owner occupied, you are.
Well, did we take the owner occupied?
That's what I was wondering in that, yeah, in uh.
Yeah.
That that that's a proposal.
Twenty-six, they took out shall reside in.
Yes.
Three, three twenty-six.
Yeah, I I don't, I I was gonna say, I don't think that that should be changed.
Well, but, you know, I, let's take the snowbird example.
Okay. A, B, B one, okay, person letting the room.
And the, the intent was that to target the snowbird who leaves for six months.
Right.
Or even is gone for the whole year.
That I do see as, you know, one of the big changes that does need to happen. I would say one out of every five houses in orange right now are rental units where the owner does not reside there. And I don't think that, as long as they play by every other rule and they're not nuisance neighbors, that should be allowed.
Right.
You know, and.
Again, it's a use of your, it's a use of your house, single family house.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, so my question is. To me, that's perfectly reasonable.
Why is that reason?
For it to be legal.
Right.
Now, the question is, well, what if it's more than one family leasing that house? And I'm just saying, why not just stop at what the zone is?
Well, I don't understand what you mean.
What I'm saying is.
We have five people, let me just make sure we, that I understand, it's a single family house, the owner is down in Florida, what, for whatever reason. And he or she rents out the four bedrooms to four different people, that's what we're talking about, right?
Right.
Okay.
But if they're all on one lease, you know, that would fit the context of the uh. Uh the exchange students, the uh, the people at UNH.
Yeah, all over the place.
You know, things like that.
Right. And that's, you said that that's, that happens in the orange right now?
I I have not had any enforcement issues running into that situation, but I've heard that there are one or two houses in town that get rented to students.
And it's not violative of our current code.
Currently, they do, it does have to be owner occupied.
Ah, owner occupied, that's a change.
Could you solve that, instead of saying owner occupied, it has to be the the ma- the primary residence of the person letting the room? So, now, you can't have what you said where there's a company coming in trying to do it all. That has to be your primary residence you do this with, that protects.
Even though you're, even though you're in Florida X amount of time, it doesn't mean that.
I don't know if that's gonna fly. Who owns it? I don't know if who owns it.
I mean, currently, actually, the the regs don't require to be the owner, it's the person who uh shall reside in the dwelling unit.
Yeah, so they're not even the owner.
I mean, the the intent of the current regs was to require, you know, the person letting to be there. Presumably for the emergency contact information or whatever, be the responsible party, so. You know, we we know that that's not happening around town right now, that people are not residing in the home. And are renting it for a a long duration, so.
For years at a time, yeah.
So, not objectionable, I mean, that's.
No, I think renting your house is something that happens all the time.
Yeah.
Right, so.
So, so that language, we're not questioning that language then in B one, are we?
Well, I, I mean, there's a, I propose, the draft amendment is to get rid of the word reside. And make it shall be the owner of the dwelling unit and or have a membership interest in the entity that owns it.
And I'm saying, I think that's a good change.
Yes.
Because it allows for the the snowbird.
Right.
Yeah, or I, I decide to move to North Carolina, but I wanna keep my house as an investment.
So we're really just.
But I, but I just rented to one family.
Yeah. Right, but the, as as Owen said, the the difference is what what is considered to be a family. Okay, it's a hard, it's a hard thing to enforce, right, people are slippery, so.
I mean, our definition right now is.
Is six.
It's, yeah, you don't have to be related, it's up to six people.
Right.
Which I think this language does restrict the six, I mean, if if this language, if you are renting or leasing rooms in the residential zone.
Yep.
You go by three eighty-three twenty-six B, that says four people.
I'm fine with that.
So I would say, listen, you're you're restricted by this code, four is the max.
Yeah, I mean, I had six people in my house and they were very objectionable. So, so, so four's not bad.
I mean, not to put words in Kevin's mouth, but I think what you're, just look, your suggestion is, you you can only rent out the whole house.
Yes.
Not, not room by room.
Yes.
So, it, you would get around, you would, you would be comfortable if they rented all those, the four unrelated people were on one lease and rented it out together?
Yeah, for as long as it was for more than thirty days.
So.
So that they're not transient, one comes in, one leaves.
Yeah.
You want them all there for the time.
Well, I mean, you can't regulate that, but th- there's one lease for the time with four names on it, yeah.
It's good when you put words in Kevin's mouth.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't articulate well.
I I don't know, um.
And listen, I, you know, like I said, i- if people are fine with basically becoming a duplex.
I'm not sure I I I see, I mean, there's a difference.
More than four people.
Say it again?
Not more than four people.
Yeah.
I, I'm just an opinion, I would be comfortable with an owner living there or not living there.
Right.
As long as you do not exceed four people and you meet the two hundred square feet per person, no extra cooking facility. I think it's reasonable for me to be in the house and then if I have an extra bedroom, if my buddy wanted to come there. You know, pay rent, he's there for, and he meets all the other.
Somebody else wants to come in, you have another.
Right, whether I live there or not, I.
I'm there too.
I mean, if you let, if you keep the residing in, then.
I think the residing definitely.
You'd have to keep reference to letting of rooms.
I think the.
Cause if it's owner, if it's owner occupied, you can never have a complete.
But just an opinion, I I don't think we should require people to get out of the house to rent it. I think as long as you are meeting the rest of the provisions, not more than four people, no extra cooking facility. You have the two hundred square feet, I should be able to live in that house if I own it.
Right.
With whether I rent it out or whether I don't rent it out.
Right, but is there, I don't think is.
No, right now, we're not, but Kevin is making, making that suggestion, if, do we wanna prohibit the renting of rooms? If I, if I live in the house, he's saying that, you know, we should only rent rooms to, so if they're gonna take the whole house, you know?
Not a subset of the house.
Yeah, not a subset, right.
Yeah.
I would, I would think the property would be more under control if the owner.
Well, clearly.
Yeah, so, I mean, what.
But that's, yeah, so I, I, listen, I'm, I'm with your working definition, I.
Yeah.
None of this is great, but I think it's as good as we're gonna get. And I think the main thing here is we wanna definitely prohibit the short term rentals, meaning, I think, under thirty days. I don't wanna, I don't wanna stop that train.
No, I mean, that's circle back to the.
Yeah.
The reason why we're having this discussion, and that's what we're trying to.
And the reside in is is big, cause we have so many people out of compliance right now, it's sort of unreasonable to.
So, are are we, are we making a change to the definition of dwelling unit or or not?
I I think it's more important to to limit the amount of people that can be in the house.
I mean. And again, I don't know, I don't know where, the other.
Eight bedroom, I mean, who knows?
Four, four people still.
I mean, again, I don't, and I don't know where the. You know, what else you uh may, you have an effect, when you change the definition of dwelling unit, dwelling units probably used throughout. The the regs.
No, does it affect anything else?
Does it affect anything else if we make that? Change we were talking about was a, or or part of a building.
Uh Owen, where did you get the um, the dwelling unit was there before, that the definition?
Well, all but what's, what he's got underlined there.
Right, yeah, I I only added um.
Oh, the including of, yeah, yeah.
Carving out of a hotel motel or recreational campground. So, I, I, look, this this board uh could choose not to touch um subsection B. Other than to just do the thirty days, and we could address that problem.
Yep.
And kinda leave the rest on the books and just not enforce the resided. That's one option, but.
I don't love the idea of having language in here.
Right, neither, neither do I.
What we're doing now, and it does, I'm saying it comes up often, but it does come up, oh, I read the regulations, you know, the owner is supposed to be on the property. This guy next to me has rented for two years.
Yeah, I don't need that.
Not my recommendation, but it is.
Yeah, I think getting rid of reside in is important.
I'm good for that.
Okay.
Getting rid of residing.
Right, and I do think we should coordinate six and four and make it consistent, or maybe the number of bedrooms or.
Yeah, I think like how how Owen said, family is really tough to define, and I'm not sure how much we wanna get into the weeds of that. I think, and again, this is just my opinion, we have an attorney here who could probably say better. I think restricting.
We're littered with attorneys.
Yeah, true, we have many of them. I think the fact that we restrict the renting and leasing of rooms or furnishing of board. To not more than four persons in the sta- in the section that they are applying under or saying, hey, I can do this as of right. I think that's clear enough to say, hey, it's four, not, not six, but.
So, not to be who I am. Not more than four unrelated people, but if, if you're a family of six, you're a family of six.
It doesn't say unrelated, it just says.
No, I know what it doesn't say, I'm just saying that if I go to rent the house in orange and I have six people in my family. And we change it to a maximum of four, I can't rent the house.
I see your point.
Right, which is not, you know, somebody's built, like my best friend, they built the house, they had to rent for a year. They didn't have six, but that, that does have, that scenario happens.
Yeah, and and I think that's a reasonable thing, if there's seven people in my family and and we're building our own house, we need to rent somewhere for.
So, so.
I agree, I I don't think they should be.
I think you can limit the number of un- unrelated people, but not.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's, that still gets us to not getting a rooming house.
Yes.
Okay, four people is a number, it's unrelated so that we don't uh, you know, uh uh somehow come down on larger families.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
So, so the snowbirds rent only rooms in their house, you're saying currently, or they rent the?
No, but they can.
They could.
They could do either.
They could.
Yeah.
That's a building or a part of a building designed for occupancy.
But in in a practical world, a snowbird's gonna wanna lease.
The whole thing.
With people's names on it.
Yeah.
Now, are, they're not gonna care if it's your son, my daughter, you know, Jack and Jill, you know. But they're gonna wanna lease the whole thing.
Alright, so.
So, I don't think we're, I don't think we're changing the the definition of dwelling unit, which is good.
Do you wanna keep what I proposed in terms of?
Yeah, take it out, yep, that.
Yeah, yeah.
So we don't have to close down those things, that's nice.
And everyone's okay, just to make sure we're all on the same page, everyone's okay with the definition of short term rental?
Yes, in thirty days, that's good.
Okay. And then um adding new seven to um three eighty-three nineteen A. Which is the enumeration of prohibited uses, the letting of rooms or furnishing of board. But we'll change that to leasing of of rooms.
If that makes it consistent, yeah, that would make sense.
Where's that four limitation?
Uh, three eighty-three twenty-six B.
That's the, that, yeah, that's the next one, so.
Yeah.
So that, so that.
What is that, B one? No, B.
Uh, it's B and then um the the numbers are for the conditions, so. I'll change the header to just leasing, instead of renting or leasing, leasing rooms.
Is that what we're gonna say, unrelated?
Yes, so instead of more, not more than four persons, we'll put not more than four unrelated persons.
Right, cause otherwise it gets to the areas that we don't wanna do.
Alright.
What section is that, Owen?
Uh, three eighty-three twenty-six.
It's the bottom of page two.
They're on the same page, go back on the bottom there.
Yeah.
And so, are we at three eighty-three twenty-six?
Yep.
Okay, gotcha.
So there, we might suggest going to a total of not more than four unrelated persons?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's still a little bit inconsistent with, I don't know what you were reading, but six.
It's our definition of a family.
Oh, oh, and what?
A person or group of related persons plus guests and domestic servants thereof. Or a group of not more than six persons who need not be so related. So our definition of a family doesn't make these people be related either. But I, I don't think that prevents us from make, from doing what we want in three eighty-three twenty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, who are we covering with uh interest in the entity that owns the dwelling unit?
It's not an individual.
By a separate business organization, you know, LLC, I don't know, the.
J Properties LLC.
We're okay with that, yeah.
That's, that's language we're, we're proposing to add, right?
So, I gotta ask, and I'm sorry, you didn't look at it, oh, oh, well, you didn't change it, three, three eighty-three twenty-six F.
Conversion of a dwelling existing, that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
What the heck is this?
That is, to become a two family home, these are the only criteria, there's no application process. If you meet these provisions here, that, that is what it is, or uh F or one, two, three, four.
And has that?
Had one or two, one or two people do it, I've never had any complaints or issues come of it, no.
Okay, so, so this is something that's been in the code forever.
For, certainly as long as.
Nineteen thirty-seven? No, we didn't adopt that code until.
I don't think, yeah, yeah, it was a little, yeah, it was forties, thirties, forties, yep.
Right.
Um, but I ha- I can't say I've had any issues with it as of yet.
It's not been amended.
Okay, attorneys, if there's a dwelling on a property that was built before nineteen thirty-seven and it burns down.
Yeah.
And you build a new one.
Yes.
Does this still apply?
So, um, the question is. The question is, does the current um zoning regulations apply? Or is it somehow grandfathered into when it was built? And therefore, the only thing that would cause it to be that way is that, but but for the fire, it would have been um okay beforehand.
Does it run with the land or the building?
Yeah, so I'm, I I'm not sure this is.
Depends who's paying you?
Yeah, right, I, I have a, I have a nonconforming building in New Haven, if it had burnt down.
We do have a casualty clause in our nonconforming.
And what does it say, six months or something?
It's seventy-five percent of the assessed value. So, if a, if a house or a building is destroyed. Beyond seventy-five percent.
Uh-huh.
Shall be reconstructed and repaired in such use.
Uh, determine. Yeah, but you're not, you're talking.
Yeah, if it's before, if it's uh more than seventy-five percent, it says you have to build it and come into today's code.
Really?
If it's under seventy-five percent, you get to resume and continue whatever nonconformity was there.
Today's, today's zoning regulations.
Correct, that's, that's casual, three eighty-three thirteen.
No, that's not exactly what you were asking.
No, cause you could have a.
No, 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 I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no, I, I, sorry, I don't wanna take up.
It is, it's an interesting question.
It's a fairly long provision, so I'm not gonna like dive into it, but definitely a good, good thing to look at.
Could've been on the bar exam last.
And there is, you know, you have to start repair within a six month period, yeah, yep. There's a lot of things that you have to meet, but ultimately it comes down to the extent of the destruction of the place.
If it had been fully destroyed, today's, you have to.
That's the way I'm reading it, yep.
Alright, so, moving on to, if we make these a few changes. Then we start the public hearing process?
Uh, if unless we need to see it again, I I think probably not.
Probably not, cause we can check it, and we can make changes after the public hearing also.
Yeah, I mean
So Owen can get us a, you know, an amended version from our comments tonight, I'll send it out to the board.
There could be uh, you know, the the public may possibly suggest exceptions to the no short-term rental rule.
What do you say, public?
No, I mean, cause I I can envision at least one or two
Yeah.
where where it it makes uh, it doesn't make sense to me to prohibit the short-term rental.
What do you got in your head?
Well, as someone coming to uh to town, you know, takes a a short-term rental for two weeks while their child has a surgery at Yale and recovers.
Going someplace else.
Well, they go to Yale because it's, you know, it's so, the the procedures are available only there.
Oh, no, no, I meant I I meant under, under the current regulations, it it's, it seems to make sense what you're saying, it would be prohibited. And my response would be, there are places that you can go for less than thirty days for those kinds of things.
And that are near Yale as well.
Right, because if we open the door to those kinds of exceptions, I think we're opening a door that's gonna
I'm just going, I'm I'm going by, I mean, I didn't, I didn't think that out myself, but but uh, I think someone said that at the uh
Yeah, that was Yeah, no, I think it's a fair point.
Zoning Board, at the Board of Selectmen meeting.
One of them, yeah. Wedding, somebody mentioned coming to the wedding.
Yeah, we had one with a wedding, you know, she booked the house and then
Yeah, but you don't have to come to Orange, I guess, is is your answer, right? All right, so let's do that, let's uh make these few changes and get it all set up for a public hearing.
Sure.
For our next meeting.
Probably later into November. At this point, we have to give thirty-five days' notice. And as long as we get all of our referrals back in time, I can uh get it two weeks into the paper. So I would say late November, probably not early December, but potentially.
All right, I mean, I I think we're close enough where we don't need to look at it again before we hold the public hearing.
So?
Okay, the next item on our agenda is uh reported to the zoning enforcement officer, Jack.
Right, I will do my best to fly through it. Um, regarding our P O C D, I was going over some coastal management uh statutes, and I noticed that uh referral for potential new P O C Ds need to be made to D E P. Now, that was not done during our referral period, and I had even brought it up with B F J, who was of the opinion that it didn't need to be done. Maybe they weren't aware that, you know, we do have small areas in Orange that are under the, under the Coastal Management Act.
Right off our thirty-four.
Right off, it's uh the Husatonic, in a, in a small sliver down at the end of Conair Road towards Milford, only a few properties there.
Okay.
So, when I noticed that, I called Owen, I said, listen, I think we need to do this before we do any voting, he agreed. Um, so that is why we are not having the P O C D vote tonight, um, that referral has already been made to D E P. Hopefully, they will get back to us before that thirty-five day period is over and we can do it before our November eighteenth meeting, but as of right now, that is when we're gonna be planning on having a new public hearing opened. Because we have to get all these referrals in thirty-five days prior to the public hearing, and then we can reopen it. So because we had a public hearing open, we realized, hey, we don't have this referral yet, we should start from scratch and then go from there. All right?
Well, I'll just add, you have to, if the commissioner makes any comments, you gotta read it into the record. If not, so be it, but you have to afford the commissioner thirty-five days.
Did anybody get a look at the revisions?
We, they, they sent us
I know we have them, did anybody look at them? Yet?
You guys tell me, I mean, I I saw them, they all looked good, like what we had discussed at our last meeting, but
All right, so we'll take a look at those before the next meeting.
Yep.
Are they gonna be here?
Uh, they are planning on being here at the November eighteenth meeting, but if for any reason we can be before that, we'll let them know when they can get here.
All right, well, we we should all take a look at the revisions.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, next is a little bit of scheduling. October twenty-first is our next regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, we have been made aware that early voting is gonna be commandeering this room. So I'm letting everybody know that as long as we obviously have uh items for our agenda, our next meeting will be at High Plains. So, everybody has been noticed. Um, November fourth, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting, that is election night, so that won't work. Wednesday, November fifth, seems to be a free day if everybody can confirm, doesn't have to happen right now, but can confirm to me sometime within the next week or two that they are free that date, or if they're not
Well, I'm good for that day.
Yeah.
Wednesday night.
Specifically to get out of, no. I know in November at the beginning, we're going away for
Okay, and if it doesn't work, then, yeah, we can, we can, uh, November fifth is Wednesday, November fifth.
You and I are going away after the election.
Yes, yes. No, no, not me. Right, I'm on the, I'm on a, I don't think I'm right, I'm on a
I think it's Ozzy, Ozzy J.
I didn't see your name.
I, yeah, I'm on a deferred some.
Well, it, you got, you got, you're staggered, yeah.
I'm staggered.
Right, so you did it two years ago, so now you're good until the next election.
No one can be, isn't it?
Yeah.
What's the the date we're gonna have the the public hearing on uh the P O C D?
November eighteenth.
Oh, okay.
So that meeting, we should be all set, everything's buttoned up by then.
At my place?
No.
No, no, the P O C D meeting for November eighteenth will be here.
Okay.
Our next regularly scheduled meeting, October twenty-first, will be at High Plains.
Oh, okay.
I will be away on the eighteenth.
Okay, so November eighteen, that shouldn't be a problem, okay.
As long as we have four people to
Right, November fourth was our regularly scheduled Tuesday meeting in November. We are hoping to just do November fifth, which is the Wednesday. If for any reason that doesn't work, please just let me know, I'm sure we can figure something out. I don't know at this point if we have anything on our agenda, but let's assume we will. Um, so we'll do that, uh, Seven Brew had a soft opening earlier, they got their C O. That's the coffee place, yep.
That's right.
So, uh, just wanted to let everybody know that.
How bright, how bright is the sign?
I drove by. I drove by in the dark.
Yeah, to wear your sunglasses.
No, well, in my opinion, the sh- the shielded achieved the brightness objective we had.
Good.
Good.
It it is obvious that the entire side of the building is a sign, but it's it's not a distraction as you're driving by.
Okay, good. Um, and they're not open full-time, that was a soft opening, they're still training people, getting some stuff squared away over there. Um, last item is commissioner training. Yeah, Scrog has made it clear that them and Yukon Clear are not gonna have new curriculum this time around. So we're sort of left with rewatching the old stuff that we did, or looking and paying attention to Yukon Clear, Kevin, I think you had sent something about, yeah. Always monitor that site, that's that's a great way to do it.
They have uh at least uh three hours of of stuff.
Which is what what's required.
Yeah, but then there's a
One of affordable housing.
I didn't get to the one hour of affordable housing yet, but I did the other two, and you can actually get through them.
Can we do it, can we do it together one evening?
Oh, yeah, you you could. It's a, it's a, it it's basically a YouTube video.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, no, it's
Okay.
It's it's made, you do it at your leisure.
It's not a, it's not a live
The Yukon Clear, yeah, you go there and you just click on a link and they have three choices.
I think Kevin sent an email within maybe the last two weeks, yeah, so we have that. And if anybody, I know I've sent the link out to the training that has already been out, that's everybody looked at. If anybody wants that again and for some reason is struggling to get their hours
You always send that twice, right?
Yeah.
Right, okay, gotcha.
And by the way, I wanna borrow that book.
Yeah, oh, if if you want, I'd be happy to give it to you before we go tonight.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
For sure, um, and I am for picking up a couple more copies of that and just having it for commission members.
Do we have to authorize him to spend thirty-five dollars a couple times?
I've got money in the budget for it, yeah, we're not big spenders here, or I'm not, yeah. The The only last thing I guess is, uh, Jay, you didn't, because you weren't here, the four hours of training that Scrog does